I call this meeting to an order. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire, emergency, and alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, I request everyone please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. Uh, additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda, Mr. Melisani?
Yes, under additions on our consent agenda, we have number seven, District Treasure Report. Under new business, uh, we did run an auction that ended on Friday evening, so we had some sale and disposal of school district property, which is eight-eight, and under personnel appointment, building maintenance mechanic.
Thank you. Uh, motion for the consent agenda, one through eight, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carry. Number five, communications, uh, correspondence.
In your board packet, uh, you see that we have for the second quarter for both middle and high school honor roll percentages, uh, three out of four kids at Walker Hall, six through twelve are on honor roll or high honor roll. So that's two percent better than where we were last at this point. Congratulations to all the students and teachers that make that happen.
Nice. And, uh, guess of the board, are we doing the top ten tonight?
Uh, no, the top ten, uh, we have so many kids that are sick, uh, so we have made the official announcement, we'll have to do it soon here, next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Uh, and the other thing too, six out of seven varsity winter sport teams have earned the New York State Scholar Athlete Team Awards as well.
And, uh, we have our, uh, points of pride. Um, on our recent superintendent conference day, elementary teachers spent the day collaborating and engaging in critical grade level conversations as part of our literacy work this year. These conversations were part of the elementary building goal for conducting, uh, a literacy review by examining assessment data and resources to help determine what defines a student that reads and writes at grade level. A team of teachers also gathered and prioritized social emotional learning standards. This work, they allowed dedicated time to focus on the elementary building goal for developing a widely accepted framework for character education.
Yes, uh, the National Association for Music Education recognized instrumental music teacher, Mrs. Jackie Peterson, for being a dedicated chaperone for the 2023 NSMA Winter Conference. Mrs. Peterson, along with Mr. Trous, accompanied three of our fifth grade students to the 2024 All County Festival. Jonathan Benedict, Kennedy Hopkins, and Jacob Wheldon all participated in the All County Band, which was made up of over a hundred students from our region. They represented us extremely well. On January twentieth, our outdoor classroom received a 2024 Excellence in Student Services Award given by the Genesee Valley School Board Association. I got the honor of accepting that. Thank you once again to the students of the Elementary Student Council and the advisors, Mrs. Amy Harmon and Mrs. Nicole Flint.
Our PTO hosted an unforgettable annual sweetheart dance on February third, which brought together four hundred elementary students and parents for a night filled with laughter, joy, and cherished memories. Thank you to everyone who made this heartwarming event a success.
Our CTE eight classes welcomed representatives from Pizza Land as they made their final pizza presentations. After visiting Pizza Land last month and learning more about the pizza business, eleven teams were charged with creating their own pizzas and applying business concepts such as creating a website and a commercial to promote their product.
Our auditing, our auditing one-on-one, our adult.
Adulting.
Our adulting one-on-one series for seniors continued with a session about mental health.
The CTE six class hosted guest speaker Mike Jamison. He is a chef for Wegmans at the Brockport location. He spoke about careers in the culinary industry as well as at Wegmans. The students enjoyed making homemade guacamole with him.
We are excited to share that five high school raiders entered a winning, a writing contest and were selected to have their work published in the Young Writers SOS sagas Hunted the Relentless Pursuit. Their mini sagas will be included in the anthology scheduled to be published on April thirtieth. Congratulations to Attila Bas- Belasi.
Belasi.
Belasi, thank you, Jovi Barrett, Phoenix Barrett, Peyton Clement, and Madeline Offen. Uh, congratulations to junior Hazel Nickerson, who scored her thousandth point against, um, it's missing it, against who was she against that day?
Cash.
Cash. Cash. She is currently ranked sixth all time on the girls varsity basketball scoring list and still has her senior year to chip away at the record books. Hazel's also closing in on one thousand rebounds and is currently ranked fourth all time with eight hundred and eighty-one.
Congratulations to Cash and crew of the Middle School Play. It's a madhouse for their amazing performance.
Fly Up is a career exploration program that provides students across the Rochester and Finger Lakes region the opportunity to explore and begin a career in advanced manufacturing while still in high school. We are proud to announce that two raiders, Nate Dahl and Tommy Canfield matched and were assigned at this exciting event.
Congratulations to junior Ava Amoris, who was on Livingston County's news hot corner featuring, featured during a week in January.
Congratulations to senior Ava Siegel and Sammy Johnson, who, whose work had been selected for the RIT College of Arts and Design, uh, start here 2024 our expedition at the RIT Beaver Gallery.
Congratulations to Coach Day, who was named the 2024 LCAA Wrestling Coach of the Year. An incredible honor for such a hardworking and dedicated coach who has built a strong program.
We're also proud to share that senior rest, senior varsity wrestler CJ Clemens is the recipient of the 2024, uh, LCAA Trevor Regan, Reagan.
Yep.
Memorial Award. This award is presented annually to an LCAA wrestler who has persevered to be a successful athlete, student, and citizen. Coach Day nominated CJ for the award not only for his dedication and commitment to the team, but also because he is the ultimate teammate. Congratulations to CJ on this amazing achievement and for representing our school and community so well. And special thanks to Coach Day for taking time to share his story and nominate CJ for the award.
Okay. Does it for, uh, we don't have anybody signed up for public forums, so that does it for communications. Number six, superintendent's report, Mr. Melisani?
Yes, uh, first up will be Dr. Snell and our performance in our high school first semester results.
Uh, so basically, one thing I want to talk about today when we're sharing a little bit about January data is that really when you're looking at data, you want to understand how this data contextualizes. So when you're looking at classes that are half year, uh, some of these courses, uh, you'll see are made up of a few more kids that, uh, maybe struggle a little bit academically, while other courses might be full of our AP students. And so you start to see maybe the difference in, um, passing rates across exams and the amount of work that teachers are putting in to get that work accomplished. Um, you might remember that last January, we did not have January regents, uh, the state of New York actually, well, last January we had them, I'm sorry. Last year we had them, but it was a fifty percent, kids only had to get a fifty percent to pass the exam, if you guys remember. So we came back from COVID, no test, to you can pass the test with just a fifty, to now we're back in the swing of things of like, you gotta actually pass the test, we've gotta get to sixty-five. So if you were in the faculty meetings in the middle and high school, you would definitely hear teachers talking about our goal to regrow kids stamina and like the expectations that we would normally have for our raiders, that we not only pass regents exams, but that we hit mastery, uh, versus that we can pass a regents exam with a sixty-five and still pass the course. So just trying to kind of change that narrative a little bit. Um, it's definitely a parent communication on behalf of the high school that I will be sending out, uh, to parents prior to us getting too far into the second semester. Uh, so teachers would tell you that the results that you're looking at is a bit of a mix like that, where we had some kids that, uh, feel like we didn't have to pass regents exams prior, and so now all of a sudden they're back on the table and we're, we're trying to reteach what it means to, I guess, put your nose to the grindstone to make it happen, um, to the best of our ability. Are there specific questions that you guys have about regions? I know I typically draw your attention to the four that are pretty fundamental for us. Kids have to, in order to graduate from high school, kids have to pass those four key exams. I'm always looking at living environment, it's typically the easiest of the science regions, just based on the curve that exists. Uh, they have to pass U.S. History, U.S. History this year, that was a brand new test for us. The brand new test started last year across the state, we did not give it, so this is our first time going through it. So you're watching a transition into some new standards that are increasing the reading and writing expectations of our learners, uh, so you'll see the difference there. Uh, that's something that our social studies teachers have already asked for not just trend data to take a look at how our kids have been doing, uh, but the ability to have some department time to kind of dig into that new assessment to see how we did overall, uh, especially on our writing components. So you're gonna watch a lot of, um, push in terms of what happens in the next couple of months here for us as we participate in June regents exams. Kids that were not successful in January actually go right back into the class to take it again if they were unsuccessful, uh, especially when we're talking about Algebra I, Biology, English eleven, and U.S. History. The expectation for us, because you need the regents exam to graduate from high school, is not that you just pass the course, but that you also pass that regents exam in order to earn a diploma. Um, so our default is we put kids right back into the classes that they need to be put back into to get through those exams. So we, it'll be similar to last year, but we will swoop back in by June and really push hard for our graduation rates to remain nice and steady.
I ask this question almost every time, and I'm sorry, I always forget. What is the level to get, that we're measuring ourselves against for mastery?
Mastery is an eighty-five or higher on regents exam. For some regents exams, I'll give you just a little bit, like chemistry, the chemistry regents exam has a negative curve, which means if you, if you get, let's say, four wrong, you're, you're really already down in the low eighties. So to hit mastery in some of these exams is a little bit harder to do than others. So it's not always the, when you're looking at that mastery rate, and I say eighty-five, know that it is not the same to get an eighty-five on the Algebra I exam as it is to get an eighty-five on the chemistry exam, just by the nature of how the curve is there. You'll see a steeper curve, in other words, a little bit easier to get through some of the exams, when they are those four cores that we're pushing really hard for graduation. And your upper level courses, forget it, forget it, the curve is challenging. Good question. Thank you.
For the first semester.
Yeah.
Okay, we have no business.
Well, one thing I'll mention, like, you have all the scores in your board packet with respect to local classes, well, as regents, AP, AP classes are just final exams, they won't take next year those exams until May. That's just what we think they are at this moment.
Thank you. New business, uh, we have several presentations. First up is the Payment in Lieu of Taxes presentation.
All right. I think there's a total of fifteen presentations, so hopefully you guys are ready for this. So our first presentation is gonna be a pilot presentation. So first things first, what does pilot stand for? So what is a pilot? Pilot stands for, it's an acronym, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. When you hear in lieu of instead of, it's an agreement made to give tax incentive to companies to come to a town or to a county. Payments are received and recorded differently than tax. So if you look at the revenue status report, or if you look at the budget for revenue, you will see the one thousand one code is where we record, um, taxes that are on the assessment rolls. So that's anybody that really owns a home, your taxes come through there. Pilots are made through the one thousand eighty-one code, and it's differently, and it's different because that goes into the tax cap formula. So they kind of want to break that out a little differently so you understand it. These assessments are not included on the assessment rolls. That is very important to understand. So if you have a pilot in your district that's thirty million dollars, that, that amount is not on the rolls. So a lot of times when pilots go back onto the rolls and the pilot agreement ends, the tax rate drops because the assessment shoots up. So how is a pilot created? Pilots are usually created through the Industrial Development Agency, the IDA of the county. Sometimes it's done by the town or the village, but usually it is done by the industrial development agency. They're negotiated to bring infrastructure or jobs, uh, to the town. So what'll happen is, think of Barilla at our neighboring district in Abon. So Barilla came, they're on a pilot agreement, they said, hey, we want to set up shop in your, in your town, give me a tax incentive to do so, and I will bring jobs to the people that live in your town. Who's not gonna turn that down? So, uh, or who's gonna turn that down? So that's kind of why pilots come to, uh, school districts. Agreements are usually ten years in length, they can go longer, um, and usually when we see it longer, they're usually solar agreements. So how does a pilot end? So a pilot is set up, and there's a term to the pilot. Let's say that pilot has a ten-year term. After the ten-year term is up, there's two options. It can either be reassessed and put on a new pilot agreement. Usually to do so, they'll say, hey, we're gonna add three jobs, give me another tax incentive, um, because we're gonna have more jobs in the community. So they're gonna give you another pilot agreement, or number two, the pilot can totally dissolve, and that assessment goes back out of the books, and now they're taxed at the full assessment. Again, when that happens, the constituents and the taxpayers of the district are very happy because the assessed value just skyrocketed, so chances are tax rates decreased when that happens. So why are pilots important? Pilots are, um, they hit the tax cap in two different areas, and we'll get to in the tax cap presentation, uh, but it is a component of the tax cap formula. And if you do it wrong, there are consequences to that. So if you misjudge your pilots and it's, uh, it's off by a material amount, good luck knowing what a material amount is, the comptroller will just come in and will make that judgment, you can be penalized on your tax gap, and that's why a lot of districts, they'll go a little bit below the cap. So if you're at a two-point-six-five, they'll go two-point-six-two, just to give that wiggle room in case you were off a couple thousand dollars in your pilot calculation. Um, also, if a new pilot is formed, assessments could decrease. So let's say company ABC is on the assessment rolls, and then they enter into a pilot agreement with the town because they're gonna create fifteen jobs. Assessments then could decrease, and the tax rate could then increase. Usually that's not what you see, usually as you come to the place, there's no assessment, you get on a tax agreement or a pilot agreement, nothing really happens to your community, but it can be that way. So whenever we hear, me and Mr. Melisani hear that a new pilot is coming to the district, uh, we always ask, is that property currently on the assessment rolls? Cause if so, and now it comes off the rolls, that could, uh, have an impact to the taxpayers. So I wanted to go over some of the pilots that Calmum currently has. Right now, we have two pilots. We have Antme Up, which is a ten-year pilot agreement. It ends at the conclusion of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and it is estimated to bring in roughly eleven thousand dollars of pilot revenue during twenty-four, twenty-five. I say roughly, it's not a.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, right?
Did I say twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah.
My apologies, yes. Thirty-two, thirty-three.
Yeah.
Um, and it is estimated to bring in roughly eleven thousand dollars of pilot revenue in twenty-four, twenty-five. That is all gonna be based on the tax rate, which we won't even know until we get later in the budget development process and assessments become finalized, you're talking even into July and August timeframe. So the problem is, whatever that assessment is for that town, or the tax rate is for that town, goes into the calculation. So I say roughly, it's gonna estimate and fluctuate up two to three hundred dollars, but not much. I think the estimate I just got in today was ten thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, so it's off three hundred and thirty. The next pilot we have is CRC, Commodity Resource Corporation, again, another ten-year pilot, ends at the conclusion of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, and it's estimated to bring in roughly seventy thousand dollars of pilot revenue. That is a huge increase. So because the pilot is nearing completion, more of the assessed value is taxed. So again, sometimes when they set up the pilots, they'll say, your first year, you get a ninety percent exemption, second year, eighty percent. So as you get to the conclusion of the pilot, you have less of an exemption, so you pay more in taxes. The thing is, when this pilot shoots up, it does have a negative, uh, consequence to your tax gap. We also have some pilots that are coming out of the books very soon, we just don't know when. There's two solars. The first one is Horseshoe, and is estimated to either begin next year or in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, they're still finalizing some data. So that's why with the tax cap is due March first, the number that you're gonna see today is not a hundred percent set in stone, I'm gonna give you a range, because I gotta know if that pilot payment is coming in. That pilot payment is estimated to bring in two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over thirty years, so it's not a big amount. Again, it's not gonna be material in case we get audited. It's about nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars per year. Earlier on in the agreement, it's gonna be, last year, probably looking at more than the seven, eight thousand dollar range, and later in the agreement, it's gonna be more, probably around ten to twelve thousand. The other solar is Caladonia CSG LLC solar, and that is estimated to begin, again, in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we just have not had confirmation on that yet. It is estimated to be a twenty-year agreement, so again, you see fluctuations, you see ten, you see thirty, you see twenty. And it is estimated, again, only to bring in about two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars over the twenty years, and it's about twelve thousand dollars a year.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do you have the original revenues from those acreages before they enter the pilot?
So what they're currently paying in taxes? I can definitely find that, but I don't know enough.
I'd be fascinated to see what the bare land pays.
Yeah.
Compared to this.
Yep, cause again, that could, based on what I said, that could increase or decrease the tax rate if they're paying more and now they're entering into agreement. My guess is it's gonna be less, but I'll definitely run those numbers for you.
Thanks, sir.
So with that, I'll open it up. Does anybody have any other questions on the pilots? All right.
I got, as the school district, when the town's working these things out, if they are, do we have any involvement during that process? Like, that, Mike's question is exactly what I was gonna ask it.
Yep.
They're, you know, putting these agreements in place at a lower tax cap hit that hurts all the taxpayers.
Yep.
So.
We go to meetings, uh, Mr. Melisani and I will go to meetings up at the town or the village offices, and we'll actually sit down with the mayor and the town supervisor and discuss these things. Um, actually, one of the solars right now is being disputed between the two school districts because it's, uh, in Abon, in Caladonia, so we're actually trying to fight for it to get some more money. So we do have a little bit of a say, we can definitely say some things, but at the end of the day, if the town wants to do it.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, when it comes to tax revenue, I would assume that that also is affecting the town taxes.
Yep, it definitely plays a role on them as well.
So.
And the town usually receives a bigger portion of the pilot than the school district does. Yep.
Especially in this case, so not even much if it is in the town of Caladonia, but the Avon School District.
I think, I think this would be fascinating if the community understood how much of the burden's being placed back on their backs.
Exactly.
Because of these programs.
And that, obviously, that should be transparent when these agreements are put in place.
Yep.
And solar is a little tougher, cause usually there's not too many jobs that accumulate from that compared to like, again, if a Barilla came near, uh, neighborhood, uh, but yeah, all great questions.
So basically, you could show us at some point how much money we're actually losing?
Yes, again, I don't think you're gonna be losing much, because the only things that probably are gonna be assessed right now is the land, and I'm guessing the land doesn't have enough of an assessed value to actually cause an issue, but again, let me look into that, and I can definitely provide you the number. I can say that the land is valued at two hundred thousand dollars, therefore they, you know, if you took that assessment off and left everything else consistent, how much, uh, the tax rate would go up for everybody else?
What size piece of land is only valued at two hundred thousand dollars?
I was just making.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was not used to that as a.
So for example, one of the solar farms is, is like, I think it's five-point-eight acres.
Okay.
All right, so that, in terms of in our district, it very well could be thirty-five or forty acres, but in terms of what's being taxed, it's like, one's five-point-eight, maybe I think the others might be eight acres.
Okay.
Impacted.
That makes sense, thank you. Yeah, which isn't a huge deal on that aspect, but to make agreements and put solar on, which would in theory make the land more valuable, but then you're giving them a huge tax break, that doesn't help the taxpayers at all. That actually hurts them, and then it's a thirty-year contract, it's not a ten, so.
Absolutely. So yeah, I'll get that assessed value, what it currently is, well, divided by a thousand, multiplied by the current tax rate that we have, and let you guys know that number that connects to you.
Thank you, Ashley.
All right, any other questions?
So the other interesting thing about that is the ag exemptions go up ten percent annually, so they give you this number now over the thirty years, well, that number of the ag value in thirty years is going to be exponentially higher.
Absolutely.
Than the current value, and I feel like something to think about.
Just something with, you know, with respect to all the pilots that I've experienced in this district is that once they get to their hundred percent, they then have to be reassessed in either they drop that substantially, or they actually go out for another pilot. They fight their, their assessed value.
Usually want some.
That's the most common. Okay.
Good information, thank you.
So next is the, let's see here.
Draft, uh, tax cap presentation.
Uh, is it full screen? My eyes are bad.
Very tough one, you're on.
Very tough, thank you. All right, right in order. All right, so the draft tax cap presentation. So in January of two thousand twelve, the governor put in a law on the tax cap formula, and I wanted to read this, debate on what is in there. It says it's limits the annual growth of property taxes levied by local governments and school districts to two percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. So a lot of people think when they hear tax gap, two percent, that's a hundred percent false. The rate of inflation of the two percent, whatever is less, is one factor out of the fifteen steps to complete this formula. So it's very misleading, and it's, uh, it confuses taxpayers, and that's why I said due to this language, constituents have the misconception that each school district's tax gap is two percent. I talked to my colleagues in many different counties, and hardly any of them are ever at two percent. The only way it is, is if they manipulate it to get there. So many factors go into the calculation of this formula, and we're gonna get into each one, but they are, uh, current and subsequent year pilots, the rate of inflation or two percent, whichever is lower, the tax base, base growth factor, current and subsequent year debt exclusions, the New York State pension contribution, um, any, any that increases more than two percent, there's tour exclusions, and there's carryover. Let's get into each one separately. So pilots, we already went over that, and as, when we see the formula, I'll show exactly how it manipulates that formula. The rate of inflation, each January, the rate of inflation is determined for fiscal years beginning July one. So towns have a fiscal year, uh, January one to December thirty-first. Villages are April first through March thirty-first. Um, schools are July first through June thirtieth. So each fiscal year will have a different rate of inflation. You can actually look it up, and they'll say, okay, if your fiscal year is this, this is your rate of inflation. So that's why it usually takes till January timeframe to, to find out what that is. This year, I believe it's four-point-one-four, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, tax base growth factor, pretty much what that is, think of that as any changes to the assessment, whether it's new construction of homes, offices, or storefronts that's within your community. So what they're saying is, if you have more property coming to your community, you need to go out and tax for that. Um, so that does not include changes in assessed value of existing homes. So if your assessment goes up twenty thousand dollars, that has nothing to do with the tax base, base growth factor. There's debt exclusion, so it compares your debt compared to aid. If your debt is more than your aid, you're gonna have a capital exclusion or a debt exclusion. Uh, right now, we get eighty-four percent back on our, uh, building aid and seventy-four percent back on transportation aid. So really, we're mostly always gonna have a, a debt exclusion. When you don't is when you're financing things in cash, such as buses, or if you have a lot saved up in your capital reserve. So let's say you're doing a fifteen million dollar project, and you're using five million in capital reserve. Well, your debt's only gonna be based off of that ten million, but your aid's gonna be based off of fifteen. So after that calculation, if the eighty-four percent of the fifteen million is greater than the ten million that you're borrowing, you're not gonna have a debt exclusion, cause your debt is gonna be lower than your actual aid. In this case, we don't have that here at Calmum, and, uh, that is why we always have a capital exclusion on our books. Pension increases, if any of the two pension systems, TRS or ERS, increases by more than two percent, you get an exclusion for that. This year, that has happened. ERS for tier four has gone from thirteen-point-one to fifteen-point-two, or fifteen-point-five, one of the two, so that is greater than the two percent. That, uh, calculates to a whopping seventeen-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. You won't see that in this calculation, uh, it was just calculated, uh, but that will be for the final one that we go over in February twenty-seventh and then submit in March first. So again, we, we do get a little help there. Tour exclusions, if any, if there's any lawsuits or anything like that against your district that is in excess of five percent of the prior year levy, you get an exclusion for that. We don't have that. And then carryover. So carryover is very difficult to understand, and a lot of school districts don't get it. So a lot of people think with carryover, if my tax cap is two-point-five, and I go out at two, a lot of people think that point-five is carryover for the next year. That is, that is not true. So carryover, the definition of have carryover, a district must have an actual tax levy less than the tax levy limit, which makes sense, so I got to go up below. Again, it's two point five is my maximum. Let's say that brings my levy to eight million. I'm going out at two, which brings my levy to seven point nine. So that would be the case. And then it is lesser of one point five percent of the twenty-three, twenty-four tax levy or the difference between the twenty-three, twenty-four tax levy limit before exclusions and the actual amount levied. So for that, I have on the next slide the calculation. So option one is over there on the left. The carryover calculation number one takes your levy before the capital exclusions, which is seven point six million, multiplies it by one point five percent. It's saying, okay, you have an available carryover of a hundred and fourteen thousand. Not so fast. calculation two, you look at your, that same levy before capital exclusions minus what you went on. So again, if you have capital exclusion, as we're going to see, it's going to increase your levy. So if it increases that dollar amount, you're going to have a negative carryover. The state doesn't penalize you, and they're saying if it's negative, it can't go below zero. So we do not have any carryover, and that is simply because there is a capital exclusion on our books.
And we did, when this first came on, we did misunderstand, the board at the time did misunderstand that carryover.
Yep. I, my first district I was at, I was shocked why we didn't get it because my neighboring district got it, and it was because we had a capital exclusion and they don't. So how the tax cap formula affects the vote. So if districts go out to, put out to vote a budget that stays within the tax gap, so what that means is at the tax gap or under the tax gap, the only thing we need to pass the vote is fifty percent plus one vote. If we decide to override the tax gap, let's again say our tax gap is two point five. If we go out at three percent, which is greater, we need a super majority to pass that vote, which is sixty percent. And here's our tax cap formula. So tax cap formula always starts with prior year levy. So you'll hear a lot of the times, if you don't go out to the cap, you're going to lose money. Yes, because your prior year levy could have been higher. So you start with the prior year levy, which was twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, I say prior year, it's current year, it's all based on budgets. You multiply it by the tax base growth factor. Man, that's a tough sentence for me to say. You add to that your pilots from the prior year. So really, that's current year pilots, twenty-three, twenty-four, which is prior year when you're conducting the twenty-four, twenty-five tax gap. You add that, you can go and tax for that money. Then you subtract, I'm sorry, let me see here.
Yeah.
Yes, you subtract your prior year capital exclusions, which is current year, and then you multiply that by the rate of inflation or two percent, whichever is less. Again, the rate of inflation this year is four point one percent, four point four percent. We are limited to two percent. And then from that, you subtract out your current year pilots, which is what we're anticipating in twenty-four, twenty-five. The reason you have to do that is because they're saying if you're getting this money in the form of pilot revenue, you don't have to go tax your community for it. So you have to subtract that from your base. And then finally, you add your current year capital exclusions, which again, is your debt compared to your aid. So our debt's going to exceed our aid by about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in the current year. And then that's your levy. So overall, again, I do not have the ERS exclusion. Some of the pilots are still up in the air as to if they're going to be on our books or not. So right now, I have our tax cap at two point five five percent. It is going to be estimated to be between two point four five and two point six five. So once I finalize that number and have it for the February twenty-seventh board meeting, I will give you that. Everything will be updated, and then we'll submit to the state by March first.
If you have any questions, Mrs. Rogers would like to explain that to you, so she'd be happy to answer.
So Jeremy, combined with your pilot presentation.
Yes.
Since there were some questions on pilots, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to understand it a little bit, how it all goes together, and I think I have it.
Okay.
So the, the, I have the Business Development Association, whatever, they want to attract the businesses, so they offer the pilots.
Yep.
Using this tax cap formula, those pilots don't hurt us necessarily. One way or the other, we get to tax at whatever rate, whether the pilot is there or not. What those pilots are really doing is dispersing the tax burden from the businesses to the taxpayers, everyone else.
If, if they had an assessed value beforehand, you're absolutely correct, and that's what I will find out with the two solars for the board members. But I will also say that, yes, the pilots are added back to the revenue, so it doesn't necessarily hurt the district. However, sometimes in those pilot agreements, there's those exemptions that I talked about. So the first year, they might have a ninety percent exemption. So it actually does hurt the district because if they were at a hundred percent assessed value, even on the pilot agreement, they would be paying more.
Thank you.
But it's not much, you know, again, it all depends.
It all depends on what they're doing with it there.
It all depends.
That makes sense.
Solar is less of a hurt because there's less assessed value with it, but with these situations, you know, you're talking borilla, it probably hurts them a little bit more.
I have another question.
Sure.
I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I should have, but it came to me as you were giving the presentation. What year did you say that the tax cap?
Two thousand twelve.
So by them, by them, and this is New York State government, putting this tax cap into effect for us, for town, all the towns across the entire state, county, everybody.
Yep.
And, and to your point, making it so that when it starts with prior year tax levy as the basis for the whole formula, they're, they're kind of taking the decision-making away. You have to tax or you're losing the money.
Yeah.
And then you never get it back. Where before, you could say, all right, well, this year maybe it's, we don't have to raise taxes, but we know that next year we're going to have an expense, so it's going to be a six percent. But hey, we didn't raise it this year.
Absolutely.
It's just like the, the rent control stuff where it's, they're forcing landlords to raise the rent every year.
Yeah.
Because if they don't, they lose it.
Yeah.
So it doesn't help it.
It, it really doesn't help. It makes everything more confusing. I always say, and you can say this with any position for anything in the schools, they always have more work, it seems like this state. And we never have enough, so they're always trying to throw another component. What they're trying to say with this tax cap formula is we want to control how much you're raising taxes and have the community have more of a say on it.
It's up to you to do it.
Yep. Before that, you could go out at thirteen percent, you need fifty percent plus one vote, and that was it. And now because of the new laws, new stipulations with the sixty percent, that's tough to hit for some districts when they go off a super, super majority. So it's definitely tough, and to your point, it is saying raise it to the cap every year, which.
Regardless if you need it.
Regardless if you need it or not, because you're going to lose, eventually you're going to need it, right? Eventually, school districts are going to need the tax revenue because of what we're going to see in foundation aid now. But you know, some districts are being hurt, and they're actually taking money away, and they're not keeping the hold harness. So if you get rid of that, your only other basis for real revenue in a district is your tax money.
If you recall, if you can recall, when Rick Tims came and presented to the board in the fall, I think it was well over three hundred thousand dollars, right?
We're behind now. Twenty-six.
What was that?
There was a cliff in like twenty-six, twenty-seven, I believe.
Oh, in terms of the, the financial cliff, but in terms of, we would have over three hundred thousand dollars.
I think our number is five hundred and twenty thousand. Our number would have started five hundred and twenty thousand higher, and I think overall, over the course of fifteen years, it was a loss of two point six million. That two point six wouldn't have been, and, and again, I'll get you the exact numbers, that wouldn't be added to our levy. That would have just been foregone revenue over those fifteen or twenty years.
We, we all thought we were heroes, showing our ten-year, our ten-year thing, how we're the greatest in the world, when all, all we were doing was fighting Andrew Cuomo from two thousand twelve in his, his little project down Long Island. So let's not, let's not raise the prices of stuff on, I've sat here, I, I just got to say, it's ridiculous. We're aware of this.
What would that have done to the communities, tax, you know, property tax values?
Well, that's, that's a good question.
Over that time, and I'm pretty sure people in the community don't, don't mind, you know, saving a few dollars.
Absolutely.
They're tight too, so.
Absolutely. So it's, it's one of those, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We can only plan. As we're seeing right now in the governor's runs and legislative runs, it doesn't look too appealing, but who knows? You know, we'll get that final number once the budget gets finalized. Hopefully, we have an on-time budget, and we'll see what, what happens there. But as of right now, I know some districts that are being hurt, between nine and fifty percent is what we heard today. You know, and they're going to be hurt over the next two years because the foundation aid formula says that they're fully funded, and they're actually overfunded, so now they're going to pay back the, the states some money. And that's the information we have right now. Luckily, we are not in that boat, but we are getting, you know, the money that she's saying we're getting is not nearly enough we need to run our programs. Equipment is that. Any other questions on the tax cap?
Nope, you could move on to your next one, equipment replacement.
This is great, thank you.
This is three out of fifteen. Running out of wine.
So the things that Jeremy was talking about now is because when we get into our actual presentation of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we're speaking to that. So this is the backdrop to it.
Absolutely. So equipment replacement plan, when I got to this school in April of twenty-one, Mr. Malzani came up to me and said, hey, I want, I want an updated equipment replacement plan. There was one in the works, but I want it updated. Luckily, I did a little bit of work on this at my prior district, so I just copied everything over and just had to update the, the information. So the equipment furniture replacement plan. So this is a multi-year forecast to replace equipment, furniture, everything that the district needs, whether it's plow trucks, whether it's furniture in the classrooms, whether it's baseball fields, parking lot resealing, tennis court resealing, which we did last year. It is intended to alert myself for budgetary purposes and directors of the equipment furniture needs to maintain the safe, adequate school, to make sure our furniture's not falling apart, and to make sure that our fields are running and everything's fine with those. If you don't get your baseball and softball field graded every seven to ten years, you could have lips, and that's going to affect planning. So the first year of the plan is to obviously establish a budget. You can have a plan, but if you don't have a budget to implement that plan, the plan's no good. So the first year would be to ask for a budget, and then the remaining years represents the replacement of that equipment and of that furniture. So with that said, this, this, by the way, this equipment does not include anything that would go through a capital project. So I know with this capital project, we're looking at Stevens Stoudt, that would come with certain amount of furniture purchases in there. We try to keep it under five percent for aid purposes because furniture in the capital project, you don't get aided on. However, Steve, there, there could be an exception to that. But this is mainly of stuff that we just need to replace through our budget, not capital projects. So I know this is tough to see, and that's okay, because pretty much what this sheet does is there's formulas in here that dictate how much money you need every fiscal year to replace the equipment that's coming new. So I sat down with my director at Buildings and Grounds, and that has changed over three times since I put this plan into place, and we say, okay, what is the useful life of a truck? Now again, we don't put a lot of mileage on our trucks here. However, they are commercial trucks, they're used for plowing. And if one of those trucks goes down, now I got to tell Superintendent Malzani, we can't open school. That's not going to be a pleasant phone call. So it's, we got to make sure our equipment's being maintained and replaced, and also with the price of repairing stuff nowadays, and how districts can turn a profit because the amount we buy things for with state contract, we can actually turn around, sell on auction maybe a year or two later, and maybe make some money. I know that's what a lot of towns do. So something I want to get into, you know, right now, our two plow trucks are a little older, it wouldn't come with any money making, but you know, when we get a new one, I would love to say, hey, next year, put it on auction, see if we can make five thousand dollars. And if I can turn around another one in ten months before the next plow season, let's go ahead and do it, you know, we'll bring that before the board, but that's a way to make money and always have something new, so you have no repair costs. So this is ever-changing. This document is never perfect, it's never done, there's always stuff added to it, there's stuff we find in our basement that we don't even know we had, and now we want to use it, whether it's a kivak machine that you're going to approve hopefully through the auction, or there's a roto that we found. So we always want to update this, we always want to be realistic. You'll see there's a big cost to replace items in that top here, which is already passed. Again, that, that's fine, everything we have currently is working, and it's working fine, but this is just to maintain it and really create a good plan going forward. So with that, why now? So in the past, the district was able to cover these costs through year-end surpluses and funding that was through year-end. Over the past three years, I've been blessed since I've been here to have our principal credit money. So any money that was a little extra, we were able to throw to new scoreboards or the tennis court resurfacing. However, at the conclusion of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that money goes away. And with the funding cliffs that we're seeing, the state aid cuts that we're seeing, I'm not very confident that we're going to have year-end surplus to do all this replacement. So the way to do it is to get it into the budget. And then earmark in the budget for future administration to know, this is what this is for. If somebody adds thirty thousand in the budget ten years ago, let's say, and they put it into a random code, and, and the administration's changed over, nobody knows what that money's for. So if you create a budget line that's in the two hundred equipment code that says the equipment replacement plan, then that's what it's used for, and everybody knows. So again, why, why is it such a, such a big deal now? If you look at tennis court resurfacing, something we should do roughly every seven years, that was about a fifty thousand dollar cost. I don't have the money in the budget to do that. We do have a vehicle and equipment reserve that we can pull that money from. I think you'll notice in the budget, we have a fifty thousand dollar line item. However, if I can't replace that money, that's good for seven years, and then it's gone. If I can replace it every year, that might be an adequate thing, and we can use that to replace our equipment. Baseball, softball, grading, we got a cost for that, I believe it was between thirty and forty-five thousand dollars to do both fields. That is to totally tear out everything, re-line everything, re-grade everything, put in a new infield, trim it back, because as time goes, everything kind of like gets pushed back, right? So the grass compared to the infield pushes back a little bit, and you got to fix that. Parking lot sealing, we're going to be grateful here in our next capital project, we're going to do probably fifty to sixty percent of our parking lots and, and millen replace those. We need a plan to keep those good. You know, I, I want to have a plan that really has a four-year plan where we're doing a portion of the campus, twenty-five percent of the campus every year. So every four years, that, that piece would be touched to make sure our parking lots stay good. Think about it like your own home. A lot of people might have payment driveways, you do it, what, every two years or one year? You try to seal it just to prevent cracks and stuff like that. Same thing here in our commercial, our lots are always filled. I'll come in on a Sunday and the, the lots are full. So it's just to protect our investment with, with what the community expects. And then I also put down their scoreboard. So I have two scoreboards in the gym one, our high school gym, there's one in the middle school gym, gym two, and there's two in the elementary gym. Those have to be replaced, those are not cheap items. So to have that money in the budget and then to know, okay, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're doing X, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're doing Y, we can really carry out that plan, and there's no need for concern. Now, as, as long as I'm here, I never replace equipment before March. So the school year starts July one. If there is budgeted to be a new truck, I will not buy that truck unless it's needed until after March. Because the thing is, we might get through the winter, and I might have an issue with and I might have an issue with the boiler. And now I got to scrap the truck because I got to do the boiler. So, my point in saying that is although we might have a plan, there could be things that happen throughout the school year that changes that plan. So, once we get through the winter season, I get to March, I get to April, everything's looking fine. I do those fund balance reports for the superintendent. We know how we're going to end the year. Then we can release those funds and buy what was budgeted for in that year. And with that, open up to any questions on that?
Will you be creating a new reserve for those funds outside of the vehicle and equipment reserve?
It's not a reserve. It would just be a line item in your budget. So, equipment is what's known as a contingent expense. So, whatever the voters approve is what you can spend on equipment. And whatever, it's just a line item in the budget. So, the voters will, you know, technically, they approve a spending plan. The board approves a spending plan. It'll be right in there, so you don't have to take it from reserves. If we do pull it from the vehicle and equipment, as I said earlier, because it's a line item in the budget, you don't need a proposition for it anymore. It's already in the budget that the voters vote on that says, "Hey, we're going to take $50,000 out of the reserve if need be to pay for any vehicle and equipment purchases." So, that could be an option. And then I would just say to the board, hopefully, we can refund that $50 at the end of the year, so we have that. I believe there's like $350,000 in there. If we refund it, that's an excellent plan. But my fear is what I'm seeing with state aid is if we're not able to add to it, yeah, you're going to have a plan, but it's going to be good for seven years, and then the plan's going to go away. You're going to need things to be replaced. You're not going to have the money in the budget. So, it's one of those things. Maybe we can do a test period and see, "Okay, we pull it from the reserves. If we're able to refund it, we know the plan's working. If not, well, we got some time to fix that." But I think what we're asking for in the budget is about a $40,000 increase to the equipment line because right now, there's about $45,000 in there, and we use $35,000 for camera purchases every year. We do get aid back on those camera purchases up to $35,000. So, really, we can't really spend that $45,000 on a truck or something like that. We're spending it on the cameras.
Are those, are those all, all those purchases are payable?
Yep. The cameras should get aid the next year.
Everything's payable that's coming out of that line item.
No, nope. Trucks are not payable. Nothing like that.
All right. Administrative priorities?
Yes, yes, I will. Go ahead.
So, our next presentation will have all of the administrative budget priorities, which is where administrators beg for extra money in the budget.
Forgot my pencil.
All right. So, I'll actually go first. So, last year, if you recall, we adopted the budget, and then shortly thereafter, the board had conversations with me regarding safety, security at our elementary school. And in doing so, we added a school resource officer, Officer Burside, and his team. It's been a great benefit for our students and community. However, that was not budgeted for last year. That's why you'll see it as an increase this upcoming year. I'm meeting with Mayor Deliberto here later this week to talk about the percent increase, but right now, we're estimating around $70,000 for that new position. I think we're up around $122, $132 for both positions currently. So, again, although we had that service this year, that's coming from fund balance, this upcoming year, '24, '25, I actually have to be budgeting for it.
In the People's Service World, what I'm asking for is to think about program planning. If you recall, in the start of the school year, we were in a position where we needed to add to our special ed continuum based on some changing needs and some unanticipated needs at the primary level. We built a self-contained 12-11 smaller classroom to respond to those needs. Currently, we have four students in that classroom. Looking ahead to next year, we anticipate between incoming kindergarten students and an out-of-district student that we'd like to bring back in district, about eight students in that classroom. So, when you're thinking about building a self-contained classroom, you're looking at a learning profile of similar needs of students. For our purposes and for the students in this classroom, there's students with autism or students with characteristics similar to an autism profile. What that means for our students is low verbal skills or deficits in language for communication purposes. That's not their strength, sensory processing deficits, and then also a need for a really structured, predictable learning environment. So, it's kind of the profile of the kids that we're servicing. So, what I'm asking for is for us to really build capacity for the adults in that room to support those learners. And it really fits into three buckets. So, starting with professional development, we're anticipating a new hire in that room. And when you're thinking about a self-contained, there's extra adults in that room. So, we're managing more people in the room. There's an aid obviously built into the 12-11 classroom setting. And then there is at least one student who does have their own one-to-one aid based on their own needs. So, we're managing a lot of adults, a new hire, and we're also building a new course, in a sense, where we're modifying curriculum at multiple grade levels in the same room. So, really wanting to put an effort in professional development for that hire.
Do you see there's a possibility with that to bring a student back into district?
Yes.
So, there is an offset to this as well?
Keep that in mind. Remind Jeremy.
I'm not going to unload right now.
Jeremy is very well aware. We've also started a partnership with the Summit Center in Buffalo, which is an autism organization, and purchase aid autism consultation hours from them. So, continuing those efforts so that we have someone keeping an eye on our program, watching what we're doing, offering strategies and supports as we, like I said, build that capacity for working with that population of students. And then increasing our accessible materials, resources, and furniture in that room because of the needs of students. Those students all work with an OT, physical therapist, a speech-language therapist, that are working really hard with the staff in the room right now to modify and support the needs of those kids, but also running alongside a list of things that they kind of, those students really require for their own needs. Things like furniture to support low tone. We're talking about kids that really don't have core strength. So, there is, they do make furniture that's not your traditional desk and chair, supporting their ability to regulate their own sensory processing needs. Things that we take for granted that students can do relatively independently in a typical sense. But these students require either adult intervention or environmental resources to manage that, as well as, like I said, the communication needs. Really relying on a more visually communicative environment versus the language.
I do think that's the first time administrators come with a budget priority that, you know, is almost a revenue source instead.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Would the new hire, potential new hire, is there, I know there's a special ed certification, or is there an autism concentration within that? Is it possible to find that?
Yeah, there's not, you can't, you don't come out of school with an autism designation, though you could certainly, there are people who specialize in that area in the sense that that's an area of interest to them. So, when they go and receive their practical experiences, student teaching experiences, they were in classrooms that supported students with autism. So, independently, they've built up their own professional development in that area just based on kind of how they maneuver through their coursework. But yeah, not a specific certification on autism.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, here we go. Elementary School. I'm going to actually speak to a few things that you've heard both Jeremy and Megan talk about throughout this. So, excuse if it's a little redundant. But the first priority that you've heard me talk about a few times this year is our music and arts program and including an elementary musical production. So, right now, we made it work. Thankfully, we were able to cover a couple other things, purchase things, with the last of our ESR funds, so you'll hear that, which left me room in the budget to cover the musical performance this year. We wanted something to be reoccurring, and we want to commit to this type of opportunity for our students. I'm definitely asking for an increase in the budget to run that program. Depending on the production that you choose, that is why the fluctuation of a $4,000 to $6,500 increase would help. The $6,500 brings you some Disney things, some Disney Junior, some different licensing, some more familiar plays or musicals to us. Scripts cost, rights cost. So, that's where you see the range there. And then, as the years go on, this is not new, but our instrumental music budget has taken a little bit of a hit with how much the increase is for instrument repairs. So, it's not that our students are beating them up. It's that the typical cleaning at the end of the school year has just increased by about $2,000. So, we clean the ones that are here. Obviously, we send them out to be cleaned. It's through a company, but their cost has increased. So, that's what you see there. And the next piece, you heard a little bit about this in the Points of Pride. Some of the work we've been doing this year in our building is to, now with a new school counselor and having also our school psychologist onboard, we're really looking at our character education program. We've prioritized our social-emotional standards. We're also looking at common language, similar to in the high school. You have Champions Five. You also have a Savvy Raider Award. We're looking to do things that are similar, but also have the vibe of our building, have the buy-in of our teachers. So, at our faculty meetings, since Mr. Green came onboard, so about October, we've really been focusing on evaluating our current character ed program and seeing what it is that our teachers are requesting with the students that we have, now the student body that we had in front of us. So, some of those things are creating common language, similar to the Champion Five. Like, these are the five things we commit to. Having a Raider pledge that we say on the pledge or on the announcements every morning. So, things like that. I'm not asking for a big increase, but definitely whenever we look, every VAM program, there's a cost to it. So, incentive awards, some visuals, and any new additional curriculum pieces that will teach to the things that we have decided as a school are important to us and that our kids need. So, that's where all the lesson work would come from. So, a modest ask for character ed. The next piece is, that first bullet kind of brings in a couple of things. So, this first bullet is asking about increasing our current art teacher. So, we have an art teacher that is shared across the building. So, she spends part of the morning in the middle school, and then she comes over to the elementary school and continues on with her day. So, that puts me at a master schedule conundrum of about two and a half hours that I don't have an art teacher. So, why that's important? Two reasons, two big reasons. One, you heard Megan talk about the additional special class. They're going to need to have now, that we're committing to this program and making it best for kids, a special schedule that is tailored to them, which means they'll have their own rotation. Right now, we're able to accommodate with some aid support that they're going with the current kindergartners. However, it's not, it's not the most ideal spot for them to be in. So, they need education brought to them in a different manner, whether it's adaptive PE, some sort of adaptive art. So, in order to add them, that class to our master schedule, I need to have the two and a half hours of art back. And then, when you talk about that too, adding another program like STEM is also adding to my master schedule, right? So, this is more of a master schedule ask than it is anything else because if we're building a program, I do have to make room for teachers to bring their students to a special area class, meet contractual obligations. And in order to do so in a more clean fashion, gaining the art teacher back for two and a half hours a day will help facilitate that. So, that's where that piece comes up. You don't see STEM, big STEM asks here. I am building the program, but we've been really lucky and smart to be able to use our COVID, our ESR funds to purchase ahead, use experiences for after-school and in the summer to introduce our students to some of the classwork that they'll be engaging in. And then also, the STEM teacher will come from current staff that we have. So, I'm not looking to add a full-time teacher to this program development. So, that's how we're building programs. We have two big programs essentially that we're building. So, just those two and a half hours I'm looking. And I know it puts Becky in a jam because those middle school students do have required art credits that they need. So, we just have to be a little creative on that. And then you'll see, as Jeremy mentioned, this is the other piece you've seen before, is part of that plan we've always put in here. I've seen all of the, you know, been part of the budget priorities for a long time. And classroom having just a plan, we've always had that at the elementary school to replace our furniture, and now we're down to kindergarten, first grade. We have worked all the years to do everything from grade five. Any questions for the elementary school that you're wondering? Yes, sir.
Yep. I guess I could ask Ms. Peterson, but, and I've been out of it for about 100 years. I thought the kids rented their own instruments, and I was wondering who owns them to where we would have to clean and repair them? We is a district.
We have a batch of instruments that we keep in-house for those that cannot rent.
Oh, I got you. So, we own?
We own, we own quite a few instruments. And a lot of the larger instruments, which, don't quote me on my music theory right now and music knowledge, but a lot of the larger instruments, they just keep and borrow it from school as opposed to renting.
Absolutely. Okay.
Yeah, we do have, we do accommodate that.
Gotcha.
But more, more than not, people rent.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
So, we upkeep those every year. Any other questions? Okay. Middle, go.
All right. The middle high school. You're going to see just a trend for me of everything having to do with strengthening instruction. I don't want to blame COVID, but I will tell you that just in general, skill work, especially when it comes to literacy, is what we spent a great deal of our time looking at this year, making sure that our kids are handling complex text, that they are understanding vocabulary. We had committed coming into this school year that we were going to pay very close attention to how we are currently teaching literacy, kind of auditing our program and what that looks like. You heard Michelle speak to that. We've been doing that in this building as well. This year, we actually partnered with our local BOCs to provide a lot of staff development to our teachers. So, six through 12, we have been pretty dedicated to vocabulary acquisition. Learning how to teach reading is something that is both an art and a science. And I would say at the secondary level, you know, six through 12, we would say that the elementary school teaches our kids how to read. By the time that they're in, you know, second grade, transitioning into third grade, they're readers. From that point moving forward, we actually need to create for them what is referred to as a staircase of complexity. We need them to start to see text that varies across genres. We need them to really learn how to take in vocabulary and learn vocabulary. So, this year, our staff development focus has really just been in vocabulary acquisition. Across the six, 12, we have created by department, at every grade level, a list of vocabulary words that are just essential to know. No child should get through sixth grade not knowing these words, seventh grade, and so on. There are words that range from things that we might teach in an English Language Arts classroom or like figurative language and sort of content to words that if you don't know the meaning of the word, you couldn't pass the test because you're not going to understand the question. So, it's been a lot of deep work. Teachers have created these lists. We sort of vetted them across grade levels and by department in our time, in our trainings. And then our trainer has been in basically teaching us that there is a specific way in which you must teach vocabulary in order to really help kids understand that words can have multiple meanings. So, our teachers have now been trained in what I would call a four-part process for teaching vocabulary. And across the building right now, that's what I'm trying to observe whenever I'm in and out of classrooms for what that's looking like. So, teachers are beginning to implement that into their practice with this idea that we are not going to take for granted that kids get through a grade level and that they don't have a vocabulary base. So, coming into the next school year, I really need to go deeper than that. Now, I need to start looking at not just the way we're teaching reading in the English Language Arts classroom, but making sure that our teachers understand what it means to put complex text in front of kids. It's going to just get another level of, we probably are going to need to use our local BOCs. We're going to want to tap into some resources of folks that can come in and help our social studies teachers do that work versus the gentleman that's standing in front of us now that's more of a generalist, like able to help us, but not necessarily the depth of getting into some of our content areas. So, you'll see the training in the science of reading, which is what is referred to. That is an estimate. I have not chosen a vendor. I'm just looking at what it normally costs to bring in a staff developer for a day. That's a pretty average cost for a day, five days. We have four superintendent conference days, and definitely, I'd like to see us set aside a little bit of extra time for our English department to really dig into the types of text we're putting in front of kids. We have data that we've been examining. We definitely need to keep looking more at the informational texts that we're giving to kids in our English classrooms. So, some pretty specific staff development that I'm looking for there. The Science Department is actually getting ready to go through their first phase of one-on-one coaching from the, from the folks at the University of Rochester that we've been partnering with. So, last year, we spent quite a bit of money in their staff development. This year, they're going into implementation. The middle school teachers are actually teaching a newer version of a curriculum. So, it's not necessarily a change in the content that we teach. It's more how we are doing that. So, we're beginning to pilot a little bit of what science should look like and this more experiential components of a classroom. So, the folks from U of R will be coming in. We've matched the staff developers to our teachers based on the needs of our teachers. Both, both middle school science teachers have actually gone to East High School as well. We've observed a couple of times to watch how this curriculum sort of unfolds, this new experience. So, they need one more round next year of one-on-one coaching. When you think about staff development, it's like anything. If I do it once, I made you a little bit better. If I do it multiple times, you actually take this new learning and you deeply root it into your practice, and we come out better off for it. So, I'm asking for that to be sustained. I'd like to see true systemic change in the way we teach science.
What's our, so the middle school, those two science teachers, they've been here quite a while?
Yes.
High school, we've had a turnover in the Science Department over the last... So, we're, you're dealing with rookie teachers in a pretty competitive marketplace out there.
Yeah. So, basically, what's happening in the world of science is that we're getting new, we're getting new standards. And so, as they're kind of changing what this is going to look like, even the way Regents exams are given, you're watching our elementary and middle school science teachers falling under the same guideline. You can't sit for the science test unless you've had these four universal lab experiences, right? So, like that much more matches what we do at the high school, where at the elementary and middle school, we've never tracked lab minutes, like whether or not kids were actually doing experience, doing science, thinking like scientists is something that maybe schools were doing, but now it's a requirement for us. They won't get through the science exams without that. And you're going to watch that transition now with these new standards moving all the way through the high school. I'm not an expert at it right now, but I can tell you that curricularly, we are going to have to make some massive shifts. We're going to have to be coming back to the board at some point, even with curriculum adoption that we might need to do because they're changing up like earth science, moving to like earth and space science. So, like things are changing on the forefront of science. Mostly, when I'm examining this, the content is not going to be the issue for our teachers. It's going to be this experiential learning, and that in order to do well on these science exams, And that in order to do well on these science exams, the kids are going to have to have these habits of thinking like a scientist or they're not going to get through it. So some of this staff development is, sure, I've got new folks, but it's also that we have to get ourselves ready to be teaching this way before all of a sudden the kids are expected to handle that kind of content in, in, in an exam.
It's almost good that you have younger teachers.
Well, here's, here's the great, yeah, here's the great news. I mean, here, this is honestly the great news. Like what, what I have right now is, as you said, I've got some teachers that are super regenerated, like they're passionate about teaching science at the middle school right now. Because this is like, we probably spent close to $4,000 just in science equipment this year. Like things that they haven't had because they hadn't needed them, because it wasn't a demand for them. And now it's like, we're going to need an ice machine in, in the science classroom. They're going to be using so much ice, right? The idea that your kids are going to have a science experience is cool. Now we come into the high school and you have like Mr. Hoy being probably the, the youngest in terms of coming out of, of his college experience. He's actually already teaching this way. This is like how he was trained to teach. And so I'm, I've got him and I'm trying to back him into a Regents exam that's kind of archaic still. So how does he do this really cool experiential science that's super fun to be in his class and to pay attention to it? And then make sure that we pass that ninth grade Regents exam. So he has that, right? So depending on which side of the spectrum we're working, each of these coaching sessions are really going to be directed towards what that particular teacher needs in order to find that, that perfect balance. So it's a plus and a con, no matter which one of them we're kind of talking about. So one-on-one coaching is definitely the best way for us to keep moving. I will say, I didn't say this when I was doing my data report, I probably should have. But when Megan started talking about the self-contained classroom at the elementary school, I just want to remind the board that self-contained classrooms don't exist at the middle high school. They don't exist at the high school at all. So every single child that Megan and Michelle are building for right now, by the time that same group of kids make their way into the middle and high school, we can't have a self-contained classroom where their math is taught by a teacher that's not certified in mathematics. So in some of this Regents data that you're looking at, you're seeing kids that were once self-contained, that are no longer self-contained. They're still supported by a special education teacher and a general education teacher. But go back five years and that same population won't be visible in our, in our Regents exams. So it's a, it's a very cool thing for me. It's a point of pride for me to be thinking about the experience that kids are getting when they're walking through our programming right now. We are constantly on a mission to increase course offerings at the, at the middle high school. So that's what you see here. I actually am hopeful to get Darren Strepp in to see you guys at some point before the school year is over. You saw last year and a year prior that we were putting some money into this career and technical education program across our six through eight. You're starting to see like us celebrating that on our social media. You had several points of pride today that were really about that classroom. When we're making investments in course creation, that's really what we're trying to do right now. We're trying to get our kids into these real-world experiences. We do have room in our current science department to add two electives at the high school. What I'd like to spend some time working on this summer is the kinds of electives, maybe surveying our kids and trying to get a sense of the things that would be exciting to them and also passion projects for our teachers for a 25, 26 implementation. I need to extend Project Lead the Way. I'd like to look at, we've been offering the Gateway Program here prior to losing our tech department. The Gateway Program is actually a series of units that you will teach. They're nine-week units. Each of, each of them comes with a very separate staff development that you would get. Our eighth graders, I think I mentioned to you about our master schedule, that I still have a hole in that eighth grade. The, the sixth grade, we built a general music class this year. The kids are playing instruments. They're learning all kinds of cool things. So I don't have the hole there. My seventh graders, you have to add health to their, to their curriculum. So I don't have a hole there. I get to eighth grade, I still have a bit of a hole. I would like to extend Project Lead the Way. In that STEM class that we're already teaching with our sixth graders connected to our library, where they're doing some 3D printing, I'd like to see her be trained a little bit more formally in some curriculum design. And then in the eighth grade, I'd like to train three teachers across the district. I need the flexibility in my master schedule to offer the same elective to kids, but taught by three different teachers if I'm going to backfill that hole. So looking for staff development there. Last, that Project Lead the Way capstone course, there is one more class that I need us to get certified in to make sure that our students can take their capstone course. That class, they actually identify a problem in the, in the world. They engineer a solution to the problem. And then they have to present that solution to a panel for approval. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mollisoni?
Yes.
Our first project presentation.
Yeah, so today we will talk about, so you see this on the agenda, basically every area but instruction. So the things that the administrators talked about today are not in this budget when I'm presenting it to you today. It will be at your next meeting when we do instructions. So. So this is the agenda for today. For a lot of you, you know this information. I'm going to get a little bit of it relatively quickly. You have all the backup notes to support that. We'll talk about our mission and vision, what's our purpose here, our budget calendar that you adopted already in November, budget guidelines that you did in January. Johnson gives us the guidance to create this budget. Decision-making criteria in terms of what makes it into the budget and then what needs to be cut. If, excuse me, if you choose to make cuts, what's the criteria that we set up? And then again, you know, those are the four areas that we're talking about tonight, 1,000, 5,000, 8,000, and 9,000 codes. And then the only proposition that we anticipate will be the purchase of the school bus rather than the budget. So with respect to the mission, you know, I think I shared this a couple of meetings ago, what conditions we want to create here in Calhoun-Monford so that our students can be their best selves? And this mission guides us in that development. With respect to our beliefs, and you'll see a lot of things that are printed or, you know, sometimes in our backup background in our slides, we go back to the beliefs when we put committees together in terms of what we believe our kids need in order to be successful. So our, all of our decisions with respect to the budget development will go back to our beliefs as well. So the budget calendar, I think you heard Jeremy say we hope for an on-time budget. I hope so too, but I don't think that's going to be the case. So February 27th, as I mentioned, 2,000 codes, all the instructional codes. That's where the majority, about 70% of your budget is instructional codes. March 19th, we have one meeting in March. We will review that and also our BOSIs expenditures. We have seen an increase in our expenditures with respect to kids that go to a vocational ed program, relatively large increase. I put April 9th with the 22nd. Our hope is that we can adopt the budget on the 9th and 22nd. This is the last possible date for us to do it by state law. And the biggest issue you have there, if you have to wait through the 22nd, is that probably none of us will get our budget information out to our community, which we're required to by law. All of us will be going to the printers pretty much at the same time. So why I'm not optimistic with an on-time budget this year is that the actual legislature actually are in session till, I think it's April 17th or 18th, before they break, break session. So in other words, a lot of times they try to be out by April 1st or near a holiday, they try to leave Albany with an on-time budget. This year, they already have it set until April 16th. So the dilemma that faces for us for Calhoun-Monford in one of our guidelines is that we would use the executive budget proposal to design our budget. So I bring that up because we received $100,000 additional foundation aid. If we use just that, we're going to have to make substantial cuts to our program to be, to bring a budget that's going to be attractive to our community. And also what I just learned, I've been at this for quite a while, but we had a budget meeting last Thursday. We did a press, presser over in Attica. And nearly 50% of our legislature that represents our, all of our school communities do not vote on their budgets. So all along, we thought there was a lot of pressure on our legislature to get it together and improve a budget. 50% of them are in small cities, basically. And they, they don't have to vote on their budget. So there's really no priority to do so. Years ago, Governor Cuomo prided himself on an on-time budget. But honestly, before him, we rarely ever, ever had an on-time budget. So I don't think we will. Hopefully, we have enough good information where we can design, especially for our revenue sources and predictable revenue sources, so that it's going to be a manageable budget that we put forth to our community.
Those districts that don't have to vote on the budget, are they, are they under the property tax debt laws too?
Honestly, I don't know that. But actually, the city government provides the money. Like for the city of Rochester, there's a billion-dollar educational budget. They determine that. So the founding, the, all the aid, foundation aid goes into the city and is dispersed to the, to the schools. It's just a different operation. And more than 50% of our students across our state live in cities, small cities. The rest are rural districts. So again, hoping for the April 9th, possibly the April 22nd, which will actually be very, very challenging. Regardless, we will have a meeting on the 22nd because we have the three-part budget, things of that nature that need to get approved so that we can go out to printing for six state notes, et cetera. We'll have our public hearing on our proposed budget on the 14th. And everybody in New York State votes on the third Tuesday, which is May 21st. So with respect to the decision criteria, I just want to point you down to number six. So several years ago, when we had to make cuts, we were making initiative and one of them was the instructional coach. We had to make a cut a few years back. And we said we would invest all this time and energy in professional development into an instructional coach. And it happened to be one of our, one of our first cuts. So as the board, you guys shared those concerns with us. So now we look at number six, provide and preserve district initiatives. So right now, you heard Mrs. Meyer talk about initiatives with respect to STEAM and STEM, music. Your Dr. Schnell talking about vocabulary development and so forth. That's where we're at in terms of getting, you know, or providing a high-quality education. So when we look at potential cuts, those are things that we will have to look at very, very carefully. So again, I'm not going to read those to you. They're, they have not changed in the last several years because you don't really have a lot of options, to be frank with you as, as the board members in terms of when you look at the criteria with respect to cuts. When we do have to cut, I will share with you what's mandated and what's not mandated. There's a relatively long list. And the city of New York tells you you have to do X, Y, and Z. Then they also have a lot of things, or A, B, and C are strongly recommended, but yet not required or mandated. That will be shared with the board as well. So at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Nardum come up, share with you where we are with respect to our budget development and that will system if necessary.
All right, so general support. It's easy to put a name to it, but think about when you get those budget transfer sheets from me. Every expense code in the district is extremely long, right? It starts with an A. If it starts with an A, that means general fund. The next four numbers is what's called the function. General support is a function. It's any function code that starts with a 1. So it's 1,000 all the way through 1999. This includes board of education expenses, district office expenses, which is superintendent, business office, which includes treasurer, payroll, accounts payable. It includes buildings and grounds is the biggest part of it. That, that is in here. Insurances are in here. There's a lot of different things that go into general support. Right now, we're looking at about an 8.06% increase from 2.4 million to just, just around 2.65 million. Transportation, this is any function code that starts with a 5. So transportation includes all the salaries, any contract transportation expenses that we may have or that we think we might have in the future because bus drivers are so hard to come by. It includes the parts for the buses, the fuel, the materials and supplies that they use, everything that's transportation-based. This is going up just over 4%. Salaries contractually going up around 3, 3 and 1/4. And then also you're going to see some increases here in parts. Luckily, I don't believe we have to increase the fuel budget at this time. I think last year, we all know, we threw some money into fuel because the prices were getting crazy. They were going $3.80, $4 a gallon. They've come back down. So I'm not going to increase some if it doesn't need to be. We'll see how it trends the next four months. But as of right now, it's just a small increase in parts and then mainly your salaries. So that's about $953,000. So again, the one thing I want to point out with transportation, most of the stuff in this code is adable. So there's some, there's some objects that if you buy for transportation, they're not adable. It's on the state aid website. We can look into it. But if you cut anything transportation-wise, you really only save about 26 cents on the dollar because we get 74% back in revenue the, the subsequent year. So whatever we spend in '22, '23 is coming us to 8 in '23, '24. So whatever I spend this year is coming back to us next year. Community services. So community services, you're going to see a big decrease. It looks like a 40% decrease because it is, but it's only a $7,000 loss. So what this is, is it used to be a salary position. When that individual left the district, now it is a statement position. So that is a savings along with community services. So this is blocking program, everything we, we have in our community services. It's done by Mrs. Blyer, Ms. Blyer in the, in the high school main office there. And then it's the salary and it's also the contractual slash supplies expenses to run those programs for the community. We try to break even mostly too. So a lot of things, you'll, you'll see the revenue side of the budget. There is some revenue coming in for community to try to break even. Employee benefits. So employee benefits are your TRS expense, your ERS expense, workers' comp, your social security, and the big one is health insurance. Up until about a week ago, we had a 15% estimated increase for health insurance. Luckily, I think you'll see in your backup notes and in your, the super temp Mollisoni provided, rates came in a lot more favorably. So 9.5% on the high deductible plan. And then there's 6% on the Blue Point and 4% on the Healthy Blue Plan. I might have had those mixed up, but it's one of those. And then 4.9% on the Genesee Area Healthcare Plan, which is usually for the administration. So health insurance came in a lot more favorably. That is updated in these numbers. And that is going from 4.4 million to 4.6 million, which is a 3.29%, which is a lot better than what it could have been. And then debt service. So debt service is anything that we pay money on, so buses, buildings. And we're going to get into what actually makes up this amount. You're going to see a big decrease here, 1.5 to 1.1 million. I don't want anybody to get excited because that looks like, hey, we're going to have a balanced budget. We cut our expenses by 400,000. When you cut expenses, you're also cutting aid. So this is, most of this is in the form of building aid. So you're going to see when we get to the revenue slide that our revenue part of the budget, which comes later on in the, in April there, our building aid is drastically going to be hit. So this isn't a true savings. It's just because we had one debt come off the books and we're also losing the aid associated with it. So getting into debt service a little bit more. What I wanted to do is put this slide together. Ban versus bond. So a lot of times when we go out for investing, we might choose one or the other. And I wanted you guys to understand what that is. So a ban stands for bond anticipation note. It is short-term temporary financing. And it's good for one year. However, you can renew it up to five years. The reason bans are so successful and the reason we like them so much in school districts is because if interest rates are crazy right now in the bond market, which they are, it allows us to delay it. So hopefully, interest rates become better when we go off of that permanent financing. Right now, we ban all our buses and we roll those over year after year. We pay off those buses between one and five years. Now we're going to see more of a payoff in one and two years, but in the past, we've seen five years. And then with the bonds, you go that when you go permanent financing. So we're going to have a capital project starting up here shortly with the community voted on. We're going to have bids starting. The reason you don't go out to bond right when the project starts is because you don't know the true expense. Bids are going to come in, yes, but they might come in and say everything's $15 million. If we go bond 15 and then we get a change order that either increases or decreases the budget or something happens, we have to pull something, you're stuck to that $15 million. So you might have borrowed money that you're paying interest expense on that you might not have needed. That's a waste of money that's not being good for your charities for the taxpayers. So what we do is we ban that money until we know the total cost and the project is closed out. And then we go to bond, which is that permanent financing. Bonds can be anywhere from five to 15 to 30 years. Five usually you see with your buses. 15 you usually see with your capital projects. 30 would be new construction, I'm building a new school. Not saying we're going to build a new school, but that's what the 30 years is for. And then the Dunbar schedules determine your debt payments. So whenever you go out to that permanent financing, we work with our financial advisors that in essence put an amortization schedule together. So I would know in years one through 15 what my interest and what my debt payments are. So there's no questions. That's why that part of the budget comes out dollar for dollar. We know what it's going to be. This is a detail of all the different debt we have. So you can see we have two capital projects on the books. We have a 6.8 million and a $2.2 million project. It shows the principal and interest payments for the upcoming school year and then the next two preceding school years. And then it also shows the interest on those and the bus purchases, what we're anticipating for principal and interest payments. And then you have your capital outlay project. As of now, capital outlays are $100,000. We always get hope with the, with the budget, so it's going to go up to 250. Right now, we're just keeping at 100 because we know that's guaranteed. And then we also have a transfer to special aid fund to cover certain expenses that go through that special aid fund of thirty thousand dollars. So you'll see that one-point-one-zero-two million, if we back up, matches dollar-for-dollar with our budget. So you can see that's those Dunbar schedules that I was talking about. It really lays out that dollar-for-dollar. And this is the anticipated expense going forward. Again, I don't have the current fifteen-point-two million dollar project on the books yet. I don't know what the total financing is going to be. I don't want to estimate a number, and then it comes in at fourteen million or sixteen million, but it can't be over the authorization, but fifteen or fourteen-five, and we don't know what the borrowing is going to be. I don't know what interest rates are going to be. And we're going to utilize bans for as long as we can until we can go out to bond and get a good interest rate. So our transportation proposition, so as of right now, this is basic wording that you've seen every year. We're looking to buy one sixty-six mattress school bus. I got the price the other day. It's around one-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. The reason you will see a hundred-and-eighty thousand is buses now are subject to quarterly PMI increases. So I want to make sure there's enough in the resolution to cover any increase in the price. So again, right now, we're looking at about a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, but we're asking for an authorization up to one-eighty, and this gives us the ability to go out and borrow for that or pay cash if needed.
Just want to piggyback on that. If you can recall, last year, when we went out and purchased school buses, we actually bought a bus from the name of a school district. Hypothetically, then ask for a hundred-and-eighty, and maybe the bus costs a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars, and you can't take possession of that.
Correct.
So that's why we have the protection in this resolution.
And then this is our final slide, which shows you all those different components, all those function codes that we talked about. Again, you're going to see a little decrease in the budget. Goes from nine-point-three-eight to nine-point-three-three. Again, I want to draw your attention to debt service. Debt service dropped four-hundred thousand dollars. Please don't think that it's going to be a budgetary savings. That just means our budget is not going to go up as much year-over-year budget, but the expense and the revenue is served equally with that. So if you look at general support, eight percent increase, transportation, four percent, employee benefits, three. If debt service stayed relatively same, you would have saw about a three-to-four percent increase in the budget, which is still under inflation. And that's where we're at currently. These numbers are being refined on a daily basis for me as I get updated numbers. They're thrown in there. I have constant communication with administration, Mrs. Rogers, just making sure we know, hey, if a kid's coming in, can we save fifty thousand? Is it going to cost an extra fifty? So we're constantly in communication with that to make sure that these numbers are always updated.
Yeah, I think just, again, so in your board packet, I've given you the Excel sheet for every single line. So you have that. We did call out to ensure we do the reasons why the number changed and why that it did. Again, it's in your board packet because it's clicked here. That takes you right to that Excel sheet. So one of our goals next year for the capital outlay project is to remove some of these spaces over here in the middle high school. We've looked at two or three different areas, some elbows that are failing. A large portion of it is underneath the cafeteria, and that's where we store a lot of our food, which would have implications for us to actually operate our program. And also with as we're looking to do the sidewalk that actually connects the two buildings on the angle. If you notice there, we have an apron there. We have, I think it's a six-foot sidewalk, which is commercial sidewalk to a residential sidewalk of, I think, thirty-six inches. We will be replacing that sort of hollow way across so that, number one, it looks nice. But most importantly, that sidewalk is failing as well as, you know, you have a piece of machinery, usually six foot, six-and-a-half foot, and you get over to that thirty-six, and we have just ruts all alongside that with respect to our, especially during winter, that matter. But that sidewalk is failing, and we identified it several years ago, actually back in the two thousand and sixteen project. But our, the bids, even though we have an intermunicipal agreement with our village and town, the rest of the project cost a little bit more than we anticipated, and we ended up eliminating that from the budget. So that's what we'd be looking at for the hundred thousand dollar project. And again, in order to do outside work, you must do inside work at a minimum of ten thousand dollars. And as Jeremy mentioned, there's been legislation, gosh, probably the last four or five years, you can't do anything for a hundred thousand dollars because everything needs to go through an architect and engineer. You're looking at anywhere from seven to ten thousand dollars just for expenses to get your project started. So there's been several one-bill laws that have been presented to increase that to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And hopefully, that will be passed here in the future. So again, I actually have some backwards. Questions? So the only question I have for the board is to share my backup notes. What is potable, potential potable tax increase when you look at that? What do you think our community can stomach? Because it won't be your traditional one-point-four, one-point-nine to have a similar program to be currently at. You're looking at a minimum, so with inflation, you're looking at a minimum four percent increase of twenty million dollar budget at a minimum to keep the same program, so it's possible.
How close are we if we go right at our tax cap? You're saying four percent, so a supermajority?
No, no, no. I think I shared in the backup notes, I think it's upwards of nine-and-a-half percent to maintain our current program. Take a look at that just to make sure I'm accurate. I think it's closer to nine-and-a-half percent in order to maintain everything and still have the flexibility in your budget to accommodate kids that move into the district and so forth. There'll be no greater flexibility than we currently have in our budget this year. And I think I think I called out, check in your backup notes, maybe nine-point-five percent would be equal.
When's the last time you did a budget like that?
What do you mean?
That we went almost double digits?
We have never. We have never.
Do you know what the highest we've ever gone on that?
I think under my career, I think the highest was three-point-six-nine percent, and that was the second year, I believe, of the tax cap. I think that's what it was. And this year, our tax cap is roughly anywhere from two-point-four-nine to two-point-six-nine percent. Well, again, this is a question I wanted just to drop in your lap because these are discussions that we will have moving forward.
Right. And I just say if, for my two cents, when we get to it, if we're going to, we should try to do it once. Is it this year or is it next year or is it three years from now? Instead of going above the tax cap again and again and again, so.
And again, because I think that makes a lot of sense, but I can tell you next year, if, you know, for you, you went to the meeting, the business meeting that we went to and just have on with Rick Tims, there's no certainty next year that you're going to get the same amount of foundation aid that you're receiving this year. I think the governor is showing her hand with respect to taking back money to school districts that are overfunded and providing the bare minimum, which was three percent, to districts that are actively funded.
So that's the other thing to consider. If, if we have to do it, and we're not the only ones, you know, so it's going to be a pretty big news splash and everything about all sorts of rural school districts with these going for super majorities. And it's going to be a result of what's happening from all of these, so. You guys will start hearing it, you know, who's deciding to do it, who's not. We're going to have to, or we're going to wait one more year. There's going to be a time when it's not just us.
Again, so those that have been around in the board and in budget development, I shared with you that this date was coming. And this was actually the year that we predicted anyways that it would happen. I think out of the three-hundred-seventy-eight rural school districts, three-hundred-and-forty-eight of them are harmed by this budget proposal by the executive director or by Governor Hall. Three-hundred-and-forty-eight of the three-hundred-seventy-eight rural school districts.
For my bit of it, I think that the administration and the board has done a good job building a very efficient program. And I think for what I see with my kids in school and their classmates, more and more is being put on the district. You know, the literacy skills, we're talking about the vocabulary skills. When have we talked about building vocabulary in middle school? The need is there for this generation of kids. And it's an unfortunate thing that, yeah, I mean, the money's not coming from the state, and it's an uncomfortable position we're putting people in, but I hope they trust that we're doing a good job being stewards, good stewards of their dollars.
And I think that's been the case if you look at the success rate, the budget approvals. And again, I think when you look at it, there's no frills in what we shared with you so far with even administrative priorities. There's not, you know, we're not asking for furniture that's out of the ordinary and it's very expensive or equipment. It's really to run your program that you, that the community's come to expect.
Yeah, I can't find it, or at least I can't understand it from your graph here, but I don't think it's in here, your nine percent. But that's what you think off the top of your head.
Actually, I think it's in your Friday weekly memo.
Oh.
That's right. Take that back. That's correct.
Was it not?
It's close enough.
Yeah.
But then where does that, since you brought it up, and we don't need to talk too much.
I don't truly believe it's going to be nine-point-five.
But if that, if we went at nine-point-five, does that set up? You can't predict what she does or what happens for Albany in the next two, three years. But does that then set things up decent? Or would you then be maybe saying, well, if we're going to do it, we better go eleven percent and try to get back some of that revenue that we lost because our previous boards thought we were doing the right thing by not going out of the tax cap?
Yeah, if I can double-edged sword.
I don't.
You know, I think I shared with this board is that I'm one of the few superintendents that actually had to always go out for a tax increase every single year to run our program. It has nothing to do with any mismanagement at all. It's having to do with that the state's not providing their fair share.
Well, what kind of a base do you want to go out with, Bob?
You know, I pride myself in leaving it better than I found it. You know, certainly, I think it's a combination of a tax increase and the use of reserves. You know, you heard about the SFR funds and things. We set that money aside for a purpose for a rainy day, and it's starting to rain, and it's going to be for several years to come. And again, it's not a count-one thing. It's all public schools throughout New York are going to experience that. The wealthier you are or the higher, like, for example, I'm making up a number here with me. Brighton might be able to tax your community at one percent and bring in one-point-one million dollars. Cal Valley-Munford, we tax our community at one percent, we're bringing in a little over seventy-four thousand dollars. Seventy-four thousand dollars doesn't purchase one teacher. Doesn't really purchase one development, professional development for the entire staff in a year. So that's the inequities that exist. You know, we don't have the tax base where we can tax our way out of this. But I think, as I shared again in my weekly memo, the combination of reserves, a prudent tax increase here, potentially a supermajority, we're definitely going out to tax cap and looking at positions and maybe how we can offer our program in a different way. It's just the reality that we're in.
And that is because our district is considered on the lower end of income, right? But we're not at the lowest as a community, so that's where our aid.
Right. So years ago, and again, I'm hoping, I think the state was funding roughly sixty-three, sixty-four percent of our budget. The state now is paying closer to fifty-six or fifty-seven percent of the budget, and the community's picked up the rest. And going back to community wealth, yeah, you would be correct. We're a little bit more wealthier than some districts, but obviously, we're a lot poorer than others as well.
And if you dig into the formula, which was the first time I understood Dr. Tims, when he dug into the formula today at the meeting I was at, it doesn't matter, our need, it doesn't matter, the community wealth is so much part of the formula. It's weighted so heavily in that formula. It doesn't matter how many special needs kids or extra money we need to do what we do.
I mean, as we talked about this in the past, I mentioned maybe going out the last few years so the community can handle the increase. We decided not to do that, so I think that would be prudent for the community and our households to consider that as an option. I know you want to do a one-time shot, but say it's ten percent for easy math. That's a big increase on people's personal budgets on their other school taxes. So I think, you know, we owe it to the whole community to really dig down here and
Certainly.
and set them up to be able to have their households have success also, not just the district.
So again, along those lines, series of long-term planning, when we develop this twenty-four, twenty-five, we're already thinking twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. It's not a one-year type of budget. We are looking and forecasting out what that might look like. We know what our, we have negotiated agreements with our associations, so we can anticipate our biggest expense, and that's people. And we always put, you know, one of the higher projections with respect to healthcare. I think Jeremy shared with you the budget fifteen, and it came in a little bit lower than that. So those are our two biggest drivers, the human capital and benefits, and it'll always be regardless. All right, so we'll discuss this further as we move forward in the budget department.
Thank you. New business number six, approval of legal counsel. Result that the Board of Education appoints the law firm of Bond, Skonik, and King, P L L C, as legal counsel effective immediately. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second to second, thank you. Discussion, and this is because our attorney that we work with most often has switched firms.
That's correct.
Sarah, is it her?
It is.
That's who she's with now?
That's who she's with now.
Basically, all of the educational attorneys that were Harrisby's went over.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. New business number seven, approval of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five instructional calendar. Result that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the instructional calendar for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Motion, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry, I did not get in touch before the meeting. One thing concerned on the elementary school side, I know last year there wasn't time provided for parents to meet the teachers before school. I don't know if there's any room for consideration of that in this calendar.
Last year, we only had one superintendent conference say, start here. This year, we have two, and that's something obviously that middle elementary staff will consider.
Okay. Thank you.
This, this calendar doesn't show the give-back days if needed, correct? Like if we don't use this, if we don't use all the snow days?
Yes.
It only says what we need to do if we use them.
So if we use two, or excuse me, three or more snow days, the days in which students will be back in session will be April fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
But it doesn't do the opposite.
So the only give-back days, contractually, it's not for students, but actually for the CMTA, that would be the Friday. So if we don't use the days, Friday, May twenty-third
Memorial Day weekend.
Memorial Day extension, Memorial Day weekend is the only give-back.
That's how it's always been. All, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number eight, under new business, sale and disposal of school district property resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Award the bid for miscellaneous items to the highest bidders from Auctions International website. Per Board Policy Number five-two-five-oh, sale and disposal of school district property. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Somebody bought that van. I can't believe it. Nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars, so that was pretty, we're very happy about that.
I tried to get the bike.
That's the one we had to take offline, and it's no longer safe.
All.
On campus.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Executive session resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at seven forty-nine P M to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and confidential student records protected by FERPA. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And we have the second by Mr. Bigford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. We'll be back. I have a motion to return from executive session at nine-eleven P M.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are back. Number ten, personnel. Motion for one through eleven adds, laid out in the agenda, with number one, permanent appointment of clerk typist. Number two, permanent appointment of clerk typist. Number three, approval of substitutes. Number four, resignation of bus driver. Number five, resignation of coach. Number six, revised retirement date. Number seven, appointment of extra class advisor. Number eight, resignation of bus driver dispatcher. Number nine, appointment of building maintenance person. Number ten, approval of school-to-work student. Number eleven, appointment of building maintenance mechanic. Motion, please.
Yep.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Those personnel appointments carried. Adjournment resolved that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting of February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four at nine-twelve P M. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Everybody have a good night.